Good evening. It is six-
Recording in progress.
I always talk over the recording in progress. I'll try again. Hello again. It is 6:31 and it is Wednesday, March 27th, and this is the school committee's special meeting at the middle school collaborative room. And in accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. If you wish to join us via Zoom, the meeting ID is 766-316-7607. This meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the local access cable channel and on the public access page, the Lunenburg and the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. So generally, we say the Pledge of Allegiance. It's not on the agenda, but this is about as rogue as I get. We will do it anyway.
(laughter)
Carol.
Woo-hoo. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Our first item of business is public comment. If there is anyone with a public comment, they are welcome to make it. Go right ahead. Please state your name and address.
Sarah Cammer, 304 Lancaster Road. And I speak for myself, not any board in town. I've watched a lot of meetings, as I'm sure all of you have. And that compelled me to come out today to say this to you. Thank you. For the first time, and I would say six or seven years in town, I felt that the value I place in education was reflected by this board and represented to our town leadership for the first time. I know many of you have served on this committee for a long time. That's not knocking previous work. But I am very grateful to every single person on this board and in this room who addressed the gross inadequacies in the funding for the schools. This year was particularly brutal. And the things that were said, some people have commented on those, and some people took them personally. And I have to say, as a member of the public, when my voice is not represented, I feel it the same way. And so I wanted to say thank you. I know I'm rambling at this point, but thank you. I mean, I think it's ridiculous that every single year you have to justify why the schools need more than a 2.5% raise when they employ so many more people in the town than the rest of the town. It's not to say that we shouldn't, as one member, one group in town, be a whole town. That's not the story. The story is the allocation of the budget is not representing the whole town every single year. And I really appreciate people saying so. And thank you for the, I forget what you called it, the six budgets, the rainbow budgets, the spreadsheet of budgets.
I think there are nine now.
Nine? You did nine budgets. And our Board of Selectmen was lamenting that the town manager would have to redo one. That's death. That's not fair. So, okay, I'm still going on. I'm gonna stop now. But I truly thank you, all of you. And especially also the parents who stood up for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate it.
I'm chair.
Yes. Go right ahead.
This morning, I sent an email that I'm about to read to the town manager, to the members of the Board of Selectmen, to the members of the Finance Committee, and the superintendent, and the chair of this committee. And I'm going to read it out loud. Dear Heather, I'm referring to Mrs. Lemieux. After watching your comments last night and seeing most of the public comments of the Board of Selectmen members, I clearly owe you an apology. I lost my cool last Thursday night, and my comments, following sanctimonious comments by members of the Finance Committee, directed at the superintendent and school committee chair, struck a tone that was too accusatory and personal. My comments should not have characterized you as the sole cause of the predicament we are in. The conditions that you mentioned last night, sunsetting Esser, transportation costs, utilities, inflation, et cetera, are the root cause. My frustration continues to be, and what should have been the lasting impression from my comments, is that despite knowing the conditions and the nearly 30 FTE cuts that a 2.5% school budget would trigger, you chose to propose a 2.94% for the schools while proposing considerably larger proportional increases in other departments. Further, despite this, you characterize the school department's share of the total budget as growing, not mentioning that your comparison hinged on retiring debt, very little of which is funded by levy limited revenues. In that same narrative, on February 21st, you suggested that the school committee may seek an override. The balance that you seek was not evident in that budget. I continue to believe it was calculated, informed by multiple private conversations that I have had. I do appreciate the progress that has been made in the ensuing weeks and the creative appropriation of available ARPA funds. However, I call your attention to my comments at the Finance Committee meeting on February 21st and subsequent FinCom meetings. My callouts: pavement management, which at the time I didn't know was buttressed by $2 million and counting in available Chapter 90 funds; local receipts; proposed increases in staffing. These are all levers that you eventually pulled to achieve balance. I think that we could have gotten to where we are sooner, saving hundreds of hours for dozens of people. Here we sit, on the eve of the FinCom's budget hearing. The Select Board didn't have numbers on most of the money articles last night, nor do I assume does the Finance Committee currently. This was sent this morning. I'd been told recently that the Finance Committee has received an updated budget. Are the changes you announced last night reflected in budget documents? How should we expect non-employee participants in local government to keep up and offer timely and effective commentary? There is a pattern here, and it is very frustrating. Again, I should not have made this personal, and I apologize, particularly for my tone. My advocacy for my position and those of my constituents, hopefully with a more palatable tone, will continue. Sincerely, Peter Beardmore. I also brought with me a visual aid for tonight. It is a newspaper clipping from October 10th, 1985. And the picture on the top of the front page of the Sentinel Enterprise was a picture of my mother, a school committee member at the time, who was walking into Turkey Hill Middle School facing a gauntlet of 70-plus teachers for a negotiation meeting. The contract had expired three months and 10 days prior to that, and tensions were hot. It says, "Stiff upper lip." Lunenburg School Committee member Paul Ed Beardmore shows determination as she walks through a gauntlet-style demonstration set up Wednesday evening by teachers outside Turkey Hill Middle School. About 70 teachers from the LEA demonstrated to put some heat on the school committee to end the contract stalemate. LEA President Cynthia Ducantis said the negotiation teams emerged from the school at 3:00 a.m. this morning with a tentative agreement that will require town voters' approval. And my mother was the lone dissenting vote on that contract. So the apple does not fall far from the tree. That being said, there's a greater purpose here. I was wrong, and I hope that people can see clear to offering some degree of grace and forgiveness. But I am not here to make friends. I have a wonderful family and very good friends. I am here for a purpose, and I will not be discouraged to do anything else than fight for the opinion that I have duly considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Anyone else? Well, I have a public comment, which is unusual. And actually, this came from my daughter, who saw it on Twitter and said, "Is she talking about you?" And I said, "No, I don't think so." It is from, it is a tweet that came, is that correct language, a tweet? Yeah, that's how much I know about this.
It used to be a tweet.
I don't know what it is now, an X. Anyhow, it came out from Tracy O'Connell-Novek, who is our MASC representative that we work with. And she is the one that understands the money that none of us understand. And she also is a former chair of the Worcester School Committee. And this is what she writes. And I thought it was apropos after all these meetings. "Here's my spring appreciation thread for small-town New England government. I got to spend some time this week with a neighboring-ish towns' finance committee. Here's the thing about spring in small-town New England. All these boards, the Select Board, the FinCom, school committee, are coming in at the end of their full-day responsibilities, and they're figuring out how to make it all work for another year on their own time as volunteers. The school committees are, yes, trying to figure out how they're going to meet the needs of the kids. And the Select Boards and the FinComs are balancing that, and the library, and the fire department, and the DPW, and the police. And none of these are big departments. You know who plows the roads, and who the fire chief is, and who opens the library on Saturday morning. It isn't an easy thing by any means. There are plenty of arguments about what kinds of governments are good and bad and so forth, and how we best ensure we do what is needed. I will say that there is a sort of sacredness to the working out of the promise we make to each other as a civilization happening around those tables this time of year." Oh. And go to your town meeting. So my comments tonight are Tracy's, but I think they are very apropos and a good way to start this evening. We are back this week because there was some confusion in our budget vote last week. We clearly voted for the pink budget, the needs-based budget. That was a definite, clear vote. So we have a budget number, but what we were apparently not clear about in the discussion that I heard over the week was the funding source. Some of us felt that we had voted to approve the budget, the needs-based budget, with the ARPA funds in there, meaning that that budget is like a 4.4, I think, without the ARPA funds? Something like that? It's a 4.4 budget instead, which is less to build on for next year. I understand that. And troubled by the fact that we did have some Chromebooks in that bundle, and that is a reoccurring purchase. Some of us feel that that actually is the 4.3 budget plus ARPA. There is an opinion that what we voted was to disregard the ARPA and to find funding elsewhere that would build the base, that we wouldn't have to worry about the Chromebook piece. There was discussion, it was at the end of the night. I'm glad this is the beginning of the night. And I want to make sure that everybody understood I thought it one way, other people thought it a different way. We need to make sure to clear that up. So I am going to ask, I think the easiest thing to do is to just go down the table. Did you believe that we were voting with the ARPA funds or without? Laura?
My answer's kind of complicated.
That's okay. It was a complicated situation.
I voted for the budget, not caring about where the money came from. But now I think it has to be with the ARPA funds, but that we're going to have the messaging that next year, we're going to need to make up this money somewhere. And we're going to need to send that message to the Select Board and the town manager and advocate for the schools getting a larger increase. I think when I voted for it, it was just the pink budget was the needs-based budget. I don't know. It was very late at night. The pink budget was the needs-based budget, and we needed the needs-based budget. I thought the ARPA money was in it, but right now, I think we need to keep the ARPA money in it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Beardmore?
I did not think it included the ARPA money, as I have said to you. And I went back and watched my comments, and I think I was pretty clear. And I made the motion to approve the number with a stated dollar value in that budget. ARPA funds do not come to the budget. They do not appear in the warrant as that number. That number reflects the raised and appropriate number and transfers and free cash and whatever else to support the school department budget. Now, I understand. I spent three years on the Finance Committee and have a different view of these things, but that is what it is. And that was my intent when I voted. Given the events of the last several days and what's come to light relative to the trash programs and the cuts that had to be made and that sort of thing, I am, truth be told, I literally had Evan Waters on the phone on my way in, like, "Where else do we do this?" You know, like, and I don't have a clear path anymore for saying, "How do we fix this?" Right? How do we establish ourselves so that it is a base that reflects all of our recurring costs? I'm also troubled, I have to say, by even what that means relative to the cuts that are coming to our expense accounts to make this needs-based budget. We are cutting art supplies in the primary school while we are adding art supplies to library programs in the children's library. Fact, not opinion. So, you know, I'm still very troubled by this budget. I think a lot's been done, and, you know, there's something to be said for compromise here. But I'm still very troubled. And I don't know how I'm gonna vote tonight.
Okay. All right. Mr. Layton?
I was under the impression that we voted for a dollar amount and the percentage. So I felt like that was the budget. Whether, how they funded it, how the town funded it, it didn't matter to me, whether it was ARPA or not. I know obviously in the future that is gonna matter, that next year's budget should start at one point. And I think the town manager, the Select Board might think it starts at a different point. I think that's the issue, for me at least. I think it's more of a next-year issue.
Okay. My feeling, my understanding was that it was including the ARPA funds because I don't know where else in the world we would get that kind of money, knowing how hard it was to get what we got. But I wanted to, I mean, our budget is set. It is the needs-based budget. We voted on it last week. But we need to make sure that we have a common understanding of are we using those ARPA funds or are we somehow trying to figure out where else to get those funds? So what I wanted to do was to have a motion made, and we can still talk after the motion is made, the discussion after the motion, to, my suggestion is to make the motion stating that our budget for next year is the 4., let me find the number.
Is that, that's the one in our drive?
It's, how the magic of the internet.
Is that the budget worksheet?
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
Thank you for putting that together, by the way. That was very helpful.
I just want to let everyone know that it just reflects some of the tweaks that were part of the 4.19 budget. But I haven't had multiple eyes cross-checking, triple-checking, or whatever. So it has not been posted on the website yet. But just for your review, it's-
Oh, I was talking about the budget worksheet with the ARPA and the money. But no, thank you for putting that one in.
That actually, that document actually came from the town manager.
The town manager.
Okay. Thank you to her for putting that together.
So that gives me the percentage that we would be voting on that our budget for this coming year is a 4.37% increase with $221,640 from ARPA. And I think we have to make that distinction so that everybody's on the same page because clearly I didn't get it, and it just could have been that I was foggy.
I think it's good to be transparent and ask questions like that. I think that's-
No, I think it's fine. So-
So can I just add?
Yes, please.
So I think we, honestly, I think we voted for the five budget, right? The pink budget. But I don't think the town manager and the Select Board could get us there. They can't get us to that budget. They're gonna bring to the town meeting the green budget, the four budget, plus-
Well, it's not-
Some one.
Plus additional funding.
Right.
But it's not the five. It's not the pink budget. That's what I think if it asks. It's like, we voted for the pink, but we're really gonna get the green plus some cash from ARPA.
But we, the bottom line, I guess is how I was thinking. The bottom line is the pink, regardless of the percentage we're calling it or the-
Well, I think the bottom line ends up being green in the end because on our budget sheet, it's gonna look like green.
Well, there's what's in the budget and what we actually spent. They're not the same thing.
Yes.
Let's just stipulate that, right? There's what's in the warrant is gonna be a number. What we're actually gonna spend is $220,000 over that because there's ARPA money. So the facts are the facts, right?
Right, right.
I don't think that those are, and the number that we voted for last week was, I believe, $24,123,548.
Correct. Five cents.
In my mind, in my mind, if we need to make it something less than that, then we need to have a motion for reconsideration and revote. Because I think you're suggesting that the budget number in the warrant should be $23,901,023, I think that's what you're saying is going in the warrant, and that should be the school committee-approved budget.
Okay. You're, you are way better at this kind of stuff than I am. I just want to make sure, at the end of the day, we are spending $24,123,548 on our children.
And I think we are all in agreement that in either scenario, that is the truth.
That we have to get to that number. So I think then, when I am thinking approving a budget, I am approving whatever money's come in, however they come in. Your point is well-taken, as always, when it comes to this kind of stuff. Your point is well-taken because we certainly don't put in our budget the Title I money.
Right. Which is also in addition to this.
Right, right. So when I look at it that way, I understand what you're saying. So the piece we are looking for, we agree on the bottom line. The piece we are looking for then is that our budget will be the $23,901,908,05 number, but we will be accepting ARPA funds in the amount of $221,640. That's what the motion needs to be then, to make this accurate.
So I agree with all of that logic. I'm probably not going to vote for it.
No, no, I understand that.
But I agree with all of that logic.
Yeah, okay. I understand that you brought me vote for it. But now it is clear, and it is clearer to me what the objection was because I just looked at the bottom line. And like, the other night, I was having Brian help me with the math, with something because I asked Mr. Google for the percentages because I don't know how to do them. So, you know, this, organizing this part of the budget, I would not have thought of that particular issue. So, Mr. Beardmore, thank you. So any other thoughts before we make a motion?
Well, my thought is, we have to do it. It's more of aligning with the town managers' funding sources. So I think it makes sense.
I want to make, I want to make clear this is a stopgap for this year, to get us through this year to get bare minimum needs-based budget. And because this, we're gonna be here again next year. Like, I don't, we're gonna get complaints about it, but we are gonna be here again next year. This isn't fixing things. The ARPA funds are fantastic. They were a great solution to stemming the bleeding this year, but we are gonna be back here again next year, going through this again because now we're still behind. If the override doesn't pass, we're gonna be back here again. So I think we need to make that very clear, too, that we're still, we're still underfunded. We still, we're gonna need more money next year.
Well, and the other thing I'd like to make clear is we felt like when we finally got, we closed the gap, and the gap was closed. I don't know publicly if that came out. The gap was closed by the town manager coming up with $41,000 and some odd amount to close the gap out of local receipts. So that gap was closed, and we felt like, okay, we did it. But we're still losing 20 full-time equivalents. I mean, this isn't like we won the race. It's just like we didn't wipe out and totally break our legs trying to do it. It's not good. This is not a good budget. I can't say I'm excited about it. I can say I am excited and delighted that it is not the 2.94 budget.
Now, it's a weird situation to begin because I'm so, it was like that with the 2.94. I'm so appreciative of the town manager for giving us more than 2.5%. But at the same time, I feel like I'm going crazy saying, "It's not enough. But at the same time, I feel like I'm going crazy saying, it's not enough, we, we need more, like, I think we need to do a, a better job explaining how thin the margins are and how much more we need than we've been getting, I think we need to, to do a better job advocating for that.
Well, as, as I've spoken to, I know Mr. Beardmore, I don't know who else I mentioned this to, and um that next year, it would be my suggestion that we, despite the task force thing that Ms. Emke is organizing, that I'm a hundred percent behind, I would also suggest that as a school committee, we have a budget subcommittee with a member of the school committee, with the superintendent, with the town manager, and with the member of the select board. So that we all know what each other are doing, so that we are not hit with a two point nine four percent budget and going, are you kidding me? So, so that this, at least if we understand what's going on, it doesn't come as a huge surprise, which is what happened, and now we're scrambling. So, so that would be my suggestion as to how to move forward, but we still have to approve this.
So may I offer just one more?
You may.
Technicality here? We don't have to approve anything. The, the budget is going to go forth with or without our approval to town meeting. The, the, the charter stipulates, and I think that there are massive problems with the charter, and I think that in fact, this may even conflict with state law, and it's something that needs to be looked at. But the charter stipulates that the town manager brings forth the budget, puts it in the warrant, and reads it in. The school committee ultimately has to approve a budget that meets our available revenues, but there's no timeline associated with that. We've already presented to the finance committee, we've done our job effectively. And we don't have to endorse, or un-endorse, or dis-endorse anything, we could stand pat and participate as things unfold over the course of the next several days and weeks. The finance committee is holding a budget hearing tomorrow night. The individual members of the finance committee have been very tight-lipped in their opinions, I'm very anxious to hear them. Um, there is still additional water to flow under the bridge. And, and I don't, I, I asked you to call this meeting in full transparency, because last Thursday night, it was very clear to me that we did not see eye to eye on what we had voted on.
Right.
Um, and I think that it was important that we air this as soon as possible.
I agree.
And I appreciate that you, that you called this meeting. I personally don't see a need to do anything. And, and perhaps our, whatever the number is, five point three five percent vote, that twenty four million dollar vote, we hold pat on until a budget is approved by town meeting. And then we just adjust, adjust the budget based on wherever the town meeting vote lands. Uh, it's not conventional, but this has not been a conventional kind of couple of months. So anyway, I'm just offering that, I, I am probably gonna, if a motion is made, I am probably gonna vote against it. Uh, and I, I think my position is pretty clear on this.
It is clear.
Um, but, but there, we are under no, in my opinion, there, there is nothing saying that we have to vote to conform to where the town manager is on this particular date and time.
Mr. Layton?
Yeah, so, so my counter to that, my only concern was that, why didn't we go with the eight point six two? And that was my concern, it's like, I wanted us to prove in a budget that was fit for our students, that the eight point six two made a lot more sense, that the town manager was gonna come up with any budget she wanted to bring it to town meeting, that we should have voted for the, the eight point six two.
Yep, I totally see your logic now, and I don't think we've.
We didn't hash it out, I guess.
I guess we didn't hash it out enough, you know, but, and I, I apologize, because I, I, I see that logic a lot clearer now than I did a week ago, and, and I apologize for not fully absorbing it.
But I think the strategy also worked, that we did get the extra, it was like forty some odd thousand dollars. I, I honestly look at the vote tonight as really just aligning with a, a budget that is, is balanced and that it's gonna be realistic for what's gonna happen next year, that the ARPA funds are going away and that really is gonna be our percent.
I think I'm more comfortable if we voted and aligned ourselves with what's going to happen.
Well, I clearly, after the mis, um, misunderstanding last week, I would feel better voting that we know that we are using those ARPA funds in this budget.
One other point, we have voted to accept those ARPA funds, I believe, at least the money that, I mean, we, we are already on the record that we'll take whatever we get, right?
I, I agree, and we probably are.
So, so we're not, I don't think anybody on this board, and I hope my vote is not interpreted as, you can send back your money, right, like, we, I, I think the, the votes that we took following the vote last week were still to accept funds that were appropriated so long as they were needed, so, again, I, I don't wanna belabor this, but.
Okay, so then I would ask for a motion that we um.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, thank you.
To approve the FY twenty five budget of twenty three million nine hundred and one thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and five cents, and also to accept ARPA funds of two hundred and twenty one thousand six hundred and forty dollars.
Point of order, I think we need to have a vote to reconsider.
Oh, yeah, you're probably right. Then we need a motion to reconsider.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the FY twenty five budget to twenty three million nine hundred and one thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and five cents.
Point of order.
You have to have a motion to reconsider first.
I'm sorry.
All right, no, it's all good.
No, just do it, just motion.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the FY twenty five budget.
Uh, actually, you can't make that motion.
Why?
Because he voted against it.
Oh, Laura, could you?
I'm not making this motion. Oh, my God, I'm motion to reconsider the FY twenty five budget.
Carol, you need to second it.
I'll second it. Okay, um, all those in favor to reconsider?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, so now, Brian, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty five budget to twenty three million nine hundred one thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and five cents, and to accept two hundred and twenty one thousand six hundred and forty dollars in ARPA funds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
No.
There you go, okay, so we are set on this budget. Now, um, what I would ask budget and ARPA funds, so now I'm looking at it different, and that was a very valuable conversation. So yes, I was gonna say, now we need to go here.
Okay, so this was really, I put together for the benefit of the public?
Yes.
So this was the bottom line value of the needs-based budget as it was presented originally, no ARPA conversation, this, this was the total value of that budget, the pink budget. This is the total dollar value for where the town manager is at this point. Um, and just as a point of clarification, for anybody who was following the finance committee meeting last week, there was a discrepancy in about twenty thousand dollars, largely that's because um the town manager was going off of the total value that was in the warrant article last year, which included the forty S money. I was going off the budget total that we presented and approved here at the school committee, and presented and sent to the town manager. So that's where those numbers were off, and if you go back to the worksheet, um, you'll, you'll see that there's a line there, um, that has that seventeen thousand and change, that is the forty S money. Um, so anyway, this is where the town manager is now. And when you add the ARPA money to it, we get to that same bottom line dollar value that was in our original needs-based budget. So essentially, the gap has been closed. And again, one more time, the ARPA money will be used to fund these items here, and these items had, all of these dollar values were originally in budget lines in the needs-based budget. So the bottom line is, we're getting at that needs-based budget, but there are still twenty point four FTE cuts, and I have made the adjustment to reflect the couple of changes that we made when we uh, reviewed the four point one nine budget a week ago. We are trading out the summer student custodian uh positions. All of that money that was in the budget would be reallocated and would allow us to keep the part-time second shift custodian at TCP. And then the other trade was keeping the music teacher position at Turkey Hill intact, no reduction. But in order to do that, we are eliminating another para position at the high school. And then the only other, I mean, I had broken down just for convenience for people, um, school by school, I don't, I don't need to go through all those slides, but if anybody was really interested in just what was going on at Turkey Hill, there it is. And then I also included a slide, because the question came, well, if there was an override and the ARPA value is in the override ask, and we were to get the override, what would we do with those ARPA money replacement? Um, as you can see, we have an, a, a rather robust list of things that are either newly on our radar, because we've recently had problems with them, or we've recently gotten to the bottom of some of the problems that we've had, and now know what we need to do to fix them. Or there have been other projects that we can never get to, because they don't rise to the level of crisis urgency must do, must fix. This whole list here, and there are still a couple of unknown um costs. As an example, I, I have their additional repairs for the HVAC system, because you remember Mr. Hevy said he was gonna try to get technicians in to troubleshoot the HVAC systems, to get to the bottom of what's the point of failure that we're struggling with, what needs to be repaired, and then what then is the cost of that repair. He also mentioned that, uh, we're having trouble with the sensors on the irrigation system. I don't yet have a quote for what the replacement of, of that sensor would look like.
Can we just add HVAC to the additional repairs, just so it's not as generic?
Yep, sure, yep.
Yeah.
So if, if you look at the known values there, they total up to uh two hundred and nineteen thousand. So you can see, we're really pretty close to the two hundred and twenty one thousand. And once you throw some unknowns in as knowns, th- there's, there is an ample list of things that we, we either will absolutely have to address and fix anyway. And then other things that we know that we need to do, and thank you to my partners in there.
It's like magic.
Yep.
Can you talk about what a sidewalk broom is?
Yeah, so it's just, it's a.
I'm assuming it's a machine and not just a very expensive broom?
Yep.
But I wanna specify, I imagine.
Exactly.
They're really fun to operate, actually.
I don't, I've never had the pleasure of operating one, and so I can't say.
I never heard such a thing, so they.
It's like a cloud of dust.
It's like a mini street sweeper.
Does the DPW have one of those? Is that something we could ask them to do for us?
Yeah, it's a good question, the, the world famous trackless system, um, I believe there's an attachment that does something similar.
Why do you know so much about this?
I was on the finance committee for three years.
Okay.
I know everything.
And capital planning.
And capital planning.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know if they have, they had the attachment to whatever predated that, and I don't know if they have the attachment to the current equipment. So I just, but, but there is such a thing.
Okay, just if it's a need, maybe that's something we can cooperate with them now on, if that's a need, like a pressing need.
Okay.
What's currently at the stand in Fieldhouse for keys?
Hard keys.
Oh.
So when boosters, when Bengals, or anybody else who uses the concession stand, we issue hard keys.
It's a huge one.
That means you have twenty four seven access to that building.
Yeah, no, that's, okay.
And I'm not comfortable with that, I haven't been comfortable with that for quite some time.
And a key card reader would.
Uh, people use keys, people share keys. Um, I would like to have a card swipe reader, just like we have to get into the buildings. That way, if I were to issue one to um the president of the Bengals, um, we would have that logged, and we would be able to set the times that that was actually active.
Yeah.
So you could show up at two AM and you can swipe away, but you're not going to get into the facility at two AM. If you have Saturday and Sunday from, I don't know, seven AM to seven PM, you, you would be able to get in. Um, and if it's lost, we go into the computer programs and shut it off. So we, we have better security of our facility.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
And we're not, Nadine is typically the one that spends the time chasing people down to get the keys back when the season is over. So it saves time in that regard, and it just, it provides greater security of the facility.
You know, from a security standpoint, that makes sense.
Many years ago, I spent a late night on the turf field with a night, with phone flashlights, looking for a key that belonged to a former, former Bengals president, who was having a heart attack because he lost the key. And we did find it, but it was a high-stress event.
Sure.
So that, that's something that, you know, um, we actually looked into and get a cost estimate on about a year and a half ago. Um, but, you know, as you can see, it's, it's not a three thousand dollar project, so it's a big-ticket item, and we have other. I, perhaps it's, it's my own bias, I tend to prioritize resources that most directly benefit students versus most directly benefit the facility.
It's a choice we have to make when we don't have enough resources.
Yep.
Absolutely.
But this is reflective of a modern facility, and we should have.
Yes, no, I agree.
This would help us take care of the facilities.
A lot better.
Right, and the same, you know, the touch view screens at the primary school, um, we did um put touch view screens in um
Turkey Hill.
Two years ago for Turkey Hill Primary School, it still doesn't have them. And the new updated curriculum.
You need them.
You really can benefit with the students having, having that type of technology in the classroom. We don't have those here, because we have wall-mounted uh projectors, like you see on the side over there, um, that teachers can connect to um.
And they do have a, it's not tactile, but it's something like it.
Yep, okay. Yep, whereas the screens that are down at the Turkey Hill, they are touch interactive, so.
I've seen them there.
And they're just mounted um on the wall in the classroom.
I wonder if instead of unknown, maybe to be determined?
TBD.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to see more typing up on the board.
Can we work the magic wall?
Magic editor.
The editor over there.
That's a good idea.
Awesome.
And these are all things that are going to have to get done.
Well, it, last, last week at the finance, you know, might have been the week before.
It's hard to remember.
Mr. Minad actually um questioned about um voice-over IP phone, and I said, I thought that there, I could be wrong, but my reflection was that we, we don't have the infrastructure capability to be able to go there, and we do need to re-cable Turkey Hill Elementary School if, if we're gonna head in that direction. Right now, the, the building itself, in its current form, it can't support it. And um, again, we had done some exploration around the cost on that as well. Um, it would require putting additional drops into each classroom. Of course, if we can make that move, then the speed and the stability of the Wi-Fi in that building are gonna be greatly improved. Which would be very helpful if, in fact, ever offices are moved to Turkey Hill.
Right.
So, I mean, one of the asks that has been made, and obviously, I think, you know, given the events of the last week, how this gets campaigned and communicated is TBD. But the asks were that, you know, this information gets communicated and messaged. Do we have a, a line of sight on those TBDs?
The additional HVAC repairs, um, that. that is pending, you might remember that Mr. Hevy said that he wanted to get technicians in for two full days to go through the systems, particularly the primary school and the middle high school, I believe, because there were more components, electronic and so forth. So that they could assess the system. Once that happens, once they're actually in and they assess the system, they'll be able to identify what the what the problem points are, and then also be able to give us a quote. So I know that he's working to set up, to have folks come in and do that assessment. I think he's still just trying to cost out that sensor for the irrigation. And we need a generator at the primary school. Again, it's been on the list, and then if we haven't had the good fortune of having some available funds at the end of the year, then we haven't done it, and to me, we're still trying to nail down a cost on that. Obviously, if an override doesn't go through, I think, depending upon the actual total cost, you will likely see that on the capital plan.
Capital plan.
Is there no emergency generator whatsoever in the primary school?
None.
So this isn't a full, this is an emergency backup generator?
Right, so in other words-
Turn on the exit lights and the heating system and that kind of thing?
Well, that's the key. If we were to lose power and have that happen during a really cold snap, where you've got zero degree temperatures outside, we run the risk of freezing the pipes and having a lot more damage done.
Well, it's also-
Which is why this, to me, is, it's an insurance policy.
It's also evident that that is an area, well, this whole area is an area, but that area in particular is an area that is prone to power outages. And my understanding from Mr. Hevy is that that takes a toll on the electronics in our heating systems.
It absolutely does.
We are probably below the meantime between failure on these systems, just as a function of not having systems like that in place.
Right. He also was looking into getting a system as part of the HVAC system that if for some reason the boilers were out, or there was trouble of some kind, he would get a notification. So he would know
Yeah.
immediately, and let's say it was on a Saturday afternoon, he could then either come himself or dispatch someone to come and restart the boilers. Otherwise, we're not finding out about it until Monday morning at 6:00, when the custodial staff arrive, and then you've gotta get those boilers fired up, and then it's, you know, trying to recover the temperature in the building, so...
Can we package some of these as capital plan furniture? Like the HVAC?
We can. The trouble with that, honestly, is that there's a lot of need across town for capital. And where do things land in a priority ranking, and does it fall above the funding line? And some of these things, some of these things could wait until it falls above the funding line. But others can't, which is why we're moving forward with a repair to the $227,000, two units on the roof here, because we can't wait another year, year and a half, for funding to repair those, because it impacts the heat in this building.
I think that these are, you know, if you if you take a step forward and assume that the override doesn't pass, and I don't wanna do that, but if you look past that, I think that these are conversations that we probably need to have in a summer or very early fall meeting. Or maybe even sooner, if the capital planning committee ever gets its act together and we actually do the annual, you know, the five-year planning that we've committed to do, still the meeting has not been called. These are all things that are in scope for those discussions. And we need to classify, we should prioritize that list as well for the override, I think. I'm not prepared to do that tonight.
Yeah, is this prioritized, or is it just a list?
It's just a list, okay.
For capital plan, though, it has to be thirty thousand and more, right?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty?
It just, I-
I knew there was some-
I feel like they try to get a good balance, and then the schools don't get a lot, but we do have a lot of the buildings in town, and that makes it difficult to take care of the buildings, because-
We did get a fairly good amount this year.
But traditionally, we have been underfunded.
But this year, I just would say we did.
And we, you know, if you look at the total value of our facilities.
Oh, sure.
I mean, the reality is you can't compare our total, it's apples and oranges, and I don't know if you could put a dollar value on the comparison. The DPW has enormous responsibilities, and they're very capital-intensive, so I think there's a better way to do this, but, you know, there are things that are what I would consider to be way below the threshold of some items on here that are on other departments' five-year plans. And we should be thoughtful about.
Okay, well, that's a summer discussion, or May, so probably not right now.
Absolutely.
But we should prioritize this list for our next meeting.
And as I said, I think you can anticipate a revised ten-year capital plan coming forward to you in the fall, now that Mr. Hevy is here and has been going through and assessing, you know, different systems here. And I've told him, absolutely, we can make adjustments based on what you see the needs are. But as I said, some of these things are not not gonna be able to wait too long. We're gonna have to figure out how to move forward with some of them. And some of them, you know, if we get to the end of the year and I have $6,000 left in my budget, we can take care of rewiring the outdoor lighting. There are three poles down at the primary school along the driveway up to the parking lot. I don't know if one is in the parking lot, and then there are, I think, two at Turkey Hill. The ones down at the primary, there's no cap, and I don't know if there ever was a cap, on top of the pole. So when you have precipitation, it gets down into the pole, and it has corroded the wiring. So what we need to do is rewire the whole light pole and put a cap on the top of the pole.
Sure.
I can't imagine whatever would have happened to that there's no cap on the top of the pole lights. But, okay.
So this list, then, I don't know if this is something necessary for us to give to the select board, because they were asking about it, or in my opinion, this is what we need to work on as far as publicity for the override and to be ready to talk about it at town meeting. But I don't see any harm in sharing it.
Yeah, I think both.
I think that would be the thing to do. I can share it with the select board and also share it with the finance committee in case.
Yeah, and I would communicate an intent to firm up some of these numbers and prioritize it.
And prioritize it, absolutely.
Thank you for getting us
Yeah, this is good.
these things, because that was my concern, is, okay, if we get the override, where does-
Where does the rest of the money go?
Where does the ARPA money go?
I think we should have a whole agenda item where we're talking about the override presentation.
Oh, definitely, yeah. We're gonna have to figure out how that's gonna work, and I think it should be an agenda item moving forward each week, just to say what should we be doing.
Should we do a community Q and A, too, for people who have questions?
Well, see, stuff like that. I think we need to have an agenda item each time
Yep.
we meet, so that, you know, what can we do? A community Q and A is a good idea. Taking care of, oops, I'm out of two, thank you. Oops, oops. Sorry about that. Somebody at home is saying, what are they saying?
I can do that, you can keep talking.
Oh.
That's okay.
All right, I'll keep talking here. So I think that if we have a number, I mean, an agenda item each time, then we can organize how, what we are able to do to get the word out about the override and what would be included in it, and work off of that.
Yeah, and I love answering questions about the budget. I'm at the point where I like it.
I agree. I think we should move on to this action of overriding.
Okay.
So, all right.
Battery replacement, just one of my many, many hats.
You're gonna wear a lot of hats in small cities.
Many things you do. She's the battery purger. Oh, this was mine, and this is yours, and you can have this one.
Oh, it's not working yet, right?
Wait, okay, there you go.
Now we can talk.
And this one. So what I would think we should do at this point is, I have this down as an action item. I wasn't exactly sure what we were gonna be doing, but why don't we have a motion to approve this list and our intention to prioritize it and to work on the unknown items?
So I think also the select board was looking for the override number to confirm it, so I would just recommend that also the school committee chair reach out to the select board with that.
I will tell them the number one more time.
It hasn't changed based on the logic that-
It hasn't changed since, it's 9:48.
Because you came up with that number after, right, you came up with that meeting after your meeting on Monday, so that's-
Yes, it's 9:48, 138.
And I think one part of why they didn't vote was because they were hesitant if we were gonna change the number.
Right.
One more week for lobbying.
So we need a motion to include our list and our override number.
I motion that the override number is officially 9:48, 138. Are there any cents in there?
That's it.
948, $948,138, and that we accept the to-be-prioritized list of ARPA funding in the event an override should pass.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And, believe it or not, that's the last item before public comment. So, public comment?
Can I do one, actually?
You can, but we're gonna have Mary do first, and then you can do yours.
I never mean to get up. Mary Foyle, 985 Flat Hill Road. I'm actually speaking more as myself and a parent on this one, and myself includes an employee here. So I teach English, and words matter. And I do appreciate that from a fiscal system standpoint, why we've called it a needs-based budget. Sitting as a high school teacher and a high school parent, sitting here as a person who moved into this town because I worked here and fully believed that the education system was some of the best there was to offer, and I've said this before, I'm getting a little more dubious of that as time has rolled on. And you're not the first school committee to have dealt with budgets like this. You know, in my twenty-plus-year career here, we've been through these. COVID, unfortunately, fortunately, I don't know which one it is, was a Band-Aid for what was some pretty significant writing on the wall. So I do appreciate that you're being a school committee who's saying, well, hey, this isn't good enough. So with the words matter, I think maybe as part of our, or your, people talking about the budget, we also have a different word than needs-based. Because when I get what I need, I feel like that's enough to really do what I'm supposed to do. As a high school teacher and as a parent of a high school child, my poor, I have another kid. She's not as existent in this world, but with those, it's a limping budget. It's a budget that is actually not enough that could be considered sustainable. So I get fiscally how it has to be called need-based, and that makes sense to people who are in the know of money management. But if you're not understanding how municipal systems work and what those words mean, needs-based actually says something very different than what that budget actually is. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary.
Does bare minimum work? That money would be too high?
I like limping.
Yeah.
I think we just go with the percentage.
Limping.
Laura, you had a comment?
I wanted to talk about the silver linings of this really fun process that's been absolutely wonderful. I think it has opened up a conversation towards better cooperation. I think that this entire process has brought attention to a very detailed breakdown of the budget in a way that I'm not sure the public has ever been so engaged in before. I think we've shed a lot of light on just how very little we've been working with over the years and how thin the margins are. I watched a lot of parents come in wanting to look at the budget and go, okay, well, let's cut the waste, and then turn around and go, oh, no. So it's been, it's been pretty illuminating, so I think there are silver linings to how awful this has been. One of the most surprising things I learned since joining the school committee is just how lean we've been running. I thought there would be waste. I thought there would be things to cut. I asked Dr. Burnham for a list of admin positions in the district office, and then I asked her where the rest of it was when she sent it to me. Because I couldn't believe how little we're getting by on, and how little admin, and how little district support we have. I thought there would be things to cut, and there simply isn't. I think in the future, I would like us as a board to try and focus more on our communication with the town manager and the select board and the town at large. We need to do a better job at conveying how rough things are and how it directly affects student achievement. We need to hammer home the message that making kids wait a year for these vital services affects their development, and we cannot let kids slip through the cracks. And I'm gonna say it again, there are only seventeen districts in the entire state that spend less per pupil than we do. We've been running on fumes for a while. Today's kids of Lunenburg deserve just as good an education as you did when you were a kid. They deserve a decent education. And I also wanted to correct, I keep hearing people use the phrase thirty percent of Lunenburg residents are below the poverty line. It's 7.2% of Lunenburg residents who are below the poverty line in 2022, according to the U.S. Census Bureau. But Lunenburg schools serve 28.7% of students who are low-income. And you know what lifts children out of poverty? A quality education. Every kid in Lunenburg deserves and needs a quality education. So the override isn't perfect, the timing isn't perfect, it's not ideal. We probably could have argued for days about details of it and still not come to a perfect solution. There's no perfect solution. But perfection doesn't happen in government. We need to move forward and do what we can to make sure this next year for students matters and get the job done. And we do need to get the override passed so that children get what they need, and we need the public support. We need the public to support the override, so we can simply fund the schools next year.
Thank you. Are there any comments on Zoom?
Yes, please.
All righty.
Ben?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Laura Burison, 389 Melfi Street. I also just wanna say thank you for all the work. This has been, it's certainly an enlightening process for myself with a child going into high school and another one that's homeschooled. I still, I completely agree with the comments that were made. I think this is, you know, our bare bones, this is what the immediate need is at the moment. There's still work to be done, and I am encouraged by how many people have stayed on so many of the calls, whether through Zoom or in-person. I've also been just appreciative of the kiddos' involvement in this whole process, their speaking as well, and pardon, sort of drunk. Also, just looking for the school board in this next phase, once we're past this, is really looking at the long-term needs. I appreciate the, kind of how some, if you call it, extra funds might be spent on the priorities, but really looking at how much we're paying our teachers. I was struck by one of the comments that, you know, last week, I think it was made about, you know, one of our teachers, like, forty-three, four-hundred, $4,300 above, you know, kind of minimum government, you know, kind of level pay. We really need to focus on the teachers and the work that they're doing and the extra that they're giving, and really making that part of a longer-term budget plan, and what, not just to keep things where they are and to kind of work with what we have, but to really look for how are we really a premier area that people wanna come to and their kids really get the most out of the school system. So again, thank you for all your work on this, but I think we've still got some ways to go, too, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any other comments.
I'll just offer one more thing.
Yeah, of course.
Um, we didn't have items for future meetings on the agenda.
No, we didn't.
And I would like to, uh, just use this moment, uh, just to reiterate, uh, two things. First, um, I think we need to make an invitation for our legislators to visit us at their earliest possible convenience, uh, and particularly reassert our position um, as the representatives of children in Lunenburg. It is not the select board.
Correct.
Also, I, uh, you know, this has been a, uh, an education for a lot of people with respect to things like grant funding and revolving funds and those kinds of things. I know that there have been a number of questions that have been asked about revolving funds. Um, I, I've been asking now for quite some time about, um, an exposé on, on athletics and I would like that to occur, um, soon.
Soon, got it.
Mr. Cassidy did do an overview of athletics funding. I believe it was in November. I don't remember if it was the first or second meeting in November. It wasn't as deep a dive as, as what you're looking to see. Um, but as soon as our financial folks, uh, sort through, um, the current year budget management, um, that I'll, I'll have them, uh, assist with digging on that.
The, the, the big asks is, it's, I'm, I'm not looking for an accounting of the, of the account. I'm not looking for an audit. What I'm looking for is an explanation of the ins and outs of the athletic budget, what taxpayer dollars pay for, what user fees pay for, what boosters pay for and particularly, you know, wha- what is running above and below our ability to support. Um, and the, the context is, is that there have been multiple suggestions this year that we raise fees. And, um, I've had, I've had to say a few times that I have some red lines, I think, in the last few weeks. That's a red line for me. Um, and I, I say that very self-interested because I pay those fees. Um, but it is, you know, we, we have nearly half of our students in six through twelve participate in athletics and it is not inexpensive to do that and that is not a free public education, in my opinion.
All right, we can take a look at those. Anything else from anyone? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we are adjourned at, ooh, seven forty-five.